Thank you. Welcome to today's zoning board of appeals meeting. Today is June 18th. This meeting was originally scheduled for June 25th, but it turns out that's election day because of the virus, so we are meeting today instead of then. So I've got to read you the meeting procedures and then we'll start after I read for the next half an hour. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anybody other than Sarah and Ryan are recording, please let me know. Pursuant to Governor Baker's order in March, there are limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, and accordingly, this meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely. No in-person attendance of members of the public is permitted, and you don't have any place to go anyway, and every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings to provide for the governor's order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting may do so by calling the phone number (508) 945-4410, and the conference ID number is (536) 742-78-POUND. Despite our best efforts, we might not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as it's available. As far as the procedure, shortly I'll call roll of the board members, anybody that's not a board member or a citizen that's participating in the call. I would appreciate it if you could give your name and the last four digits of your phone number the first time you speak. When we're ready for the petition, and we only have one today, which is this 40B, Sarah Clark will read the petition, the representative will present the application. I will then ask anybody in favor of the appeal or application to speak. I will then read all of the letters received to date by the board. I will then ask anybody against the appeal or application to speak or ask a specific question. The applicant may then rebut testimony. When we've finished all of that, the board members may direct questions to anybody participating in the presentation. Once we're satisfied with the information that we've gathered, we will close the public hearing, and at that point, no one may participate unless asked to do so by a board member. We will then deliberate as a board, and following deliberation, we will take a vote on the appeal. But we're actually not doing that today because we have to stop this meeting at 5:00, and so we know in advance that the meeting is going to be continued until the 23rd of July. Is that correct, Sarah? Yes?
That is correct.
And so the only thing we will do today is, at the end of the meeting, vote on the continuation until the 23rd of July. All votes are taken by roll call, and at the end of the meeting, we will close it by verbal communication and note the time of the adjournment. So having said all that, I will now ask the board members to identify themselves. I'm Bob Hessler, the chair, followed by Mr. Nixon.
I'm Dave Nixon. I'm here.
Mr. Semple.
Paul Semple, here.
Mr. Veach.
David Veach, present.
Happy Van Sickle.
Happy Van Sickle, here.
Dennis Sullivan.
Dennis Sullivan, here.
Buck Upson.
Buck Upson, present.
And also here are Sarah Clark, who is the principal permitting coordinator for the town of Chatham and an employee of the town of Chatham, and Chantel Kilkenny, who takes our notes and is of great assistance to the board as well. I think that's everybody that's from the town or from the board, so if that is correct.
Well, Mr. Hessler, I believe Mr. Veach is here as well.
David already spoke. He identified himself. Veach, you said, right?
Yes.
Yeah, he identified. He said hello. So if I've got all the i's and p's dotted and crossed, we can start with reading the petition.
Okay. Application number 20-033, Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, care of Warren H. Brody Esquire, to Salt Hill Road, Wacoit, Mass., 02536. The property is owned by the Chatham Affordable Housing Trust located at 11 George Ryder Road South, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 8D Block 53 Lot 6. The applicants are requesting the grant of a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Law Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23, and 760 CMR 56, for the construction of two single-family dwellings. The applicants are requesting the grant of various waivers from regulations promulgated by the Chatham zoning bylaw, Chatham subdivision regulations, the Chatham Water and Sewer Department, and the Chatham Board of Health, and other local regulations. The property contains 20,101 square feet in the GB3 zoning district.
So I'm not sure who's going to speak. Is it you, Beth, or somebody else? When you speak, please identify yourself, your title, and then, for identification purposes, the last four digits of your phone number.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chair, Warren Brody, our attorney, is going to present.
Thank you.
Beth Wade.
Thank you. This is Warren Brody. I am the attorney for Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, Inc., the applicant. I'm also a member of its board. With me today are Elizabeth Wade, who just spoke, who is Habitat's director of land acquisition and project development. Also, I believe Robert Reedy, Bob Reedy of J.M. O'Reilly &amp; Sons is here. They are the engineering firm for the project. And is Robert Riley here?
Yes, I am. On phone, audio only.
Okay. Bob Riley is the director of construction for Habitat Cape Cod. He's also a licensed construction supervisor. So you've heard the introduction. What Habitat is proposing to do is to build two new, single-family, deed-restricted, affordable homes at 11 George Ryder Road South. We plan to accomplish this through the subdivision of that parcel into two parcels with one home on each. I'd refer you to the plans that have been provided, including the site plan for zoning board of appeals prepared by the O'Reilly Firm and dated December 31, 2019. There is also a definitive subdivision plan. There is also a landscaping plan. The site plan basically gives you the idea of what we're proposing. In addition, in the application package at Exhibit A, you will find various plans and photographs of the site and adjacent locations. This application is being brought under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40B. 40B requires us to have a subsidizing agency, which in this case is the Department of Housing and Community Development under the local initiative program. And if you look in our application package, under Exhibit C, you will find the project eligibility letter issued by DHCD, which gives us standing. That and the land disposition agreement with the Chatham Affordable Housing Trust, the owner of the property, also gives us standing in this case. Habitat was awarded this project through an RFP process with the Chatham Affordable Housing Trust, which resulted in the land disposition agreement. And let's talk about the site itself. It's roughly 20,000 square feet. I think it's 20,101 square feet. And...
Your phone is making sounds.
Okay. We propose to subdivide it into two roughly equivalent 10,000 square-foot parcels. The zoning of this site, the underlying zoning, is GB3, which, under the zoning regulations, a single-family home may be constructed, a one-family home may be constructed under a special permit. The site is within the jurisdiction of Chatham's Historic Business District. The lot is currently vacant. It is very flat, frankly, has some trees on it. It is in an area that is transitional, that is to say, there's an office building with an apartment on Route 28 of the northern boundary. On the southern boundary is a traditional cape, and across George Ryder Road South to the west, there is a retail office space development with apartments above. Under Tab A, you can see the designs that we propose. One house, the house on the westerlymost lot, or southerly, I guess, is a two-bedroom ranch, excuse me, a two-bedroom ranch, and the lot B, we're proposing a three-bedroom cape. That is actually a three-bedroom, two-bath cape. The lots will each have a driveway entrance from George Ryder Road South, and we propose that each home will be tied into the town's sewer system. We have mentioned waivers. At Exhibit D is the list of the waivers that we have, that we are requesting, and we can go over those in more detail. This is what we call a friendly 40B. This is a project where we have engaged the community. We have endeavored from the start to be responsive to the community and its needs. We have met with the community development and planning staff. We have met with DPW, Health and Natural Resources, community development, the building commissioner, the fire chief, Sarah Clark as well, Ally Sabatino, the town planner, and Linda Deegan, who is the affordable housing specialist. We have communicated with the neighbors early on in the process. We sent a letter to all the butters within 300 feet of the project. We held a public meeting at the end of, excuse me, November 11, 2019, soliciting the community's interest in the project. We presented the project to Chatham's Community Housing Partnership on November 13th, to the Board of Selectmen on November 18th, those are both in 2019, and received the endorsement of both. We also met with the planning board last week and received their endorsement as well. We are requesting a waiver from the requirements of the Historic Business District Commission. We did meet with them on April 15th, and there are some materials that you will find in Exhibit I, and there is also a document with us today showing preferences for selection of building materials in terms of colors that the department is interested in. In keeping with past projects, it's been our history to partner with the whole community. We seek donations of materials, professional services, and labor. We strive to make our homes welcome in the neighborhood and to be good neighbors. We will work to create a collaborative spirit where the whole community can be actively involved, and we love our volunteers, and volunteers are eager to help with all of our projects. Of course, in these COVID-19 times, that is limited, but we are trying to find workarounds. So 100% of these homes will be affordable to lower-income families as defined by DHCD, with a primary focus on households who are earning at or below 60% to 65% of the area median income, in keeping with Habitat's mission, as well as the grant targeting standards of the Heff Federal Home Loan Bank of Boston, who provides significant funding. Bank of Boston, who provides significant funding for this project. The homes will be affordable in perpetuity, protected by a D H C D Local Initiative Program Regulatory Agreement and deed rider, which you can find at Exhibit H. Both homes will count on Chatham's subsidized housing inventory. The proposed sale prices will be at or around a hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the two-bedroom and a hundred and fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the three-bedroom. The price might be adjusted slightly based upon calculations at the time of the sale. Uh, at Exhibit H, you will also find a rationale for calculation of the affordable purchase price. Uh, we will also work with the town and D H, uh, and D H C D requesting that at least one of the two homes be awarded a local preference, which is a preference for applicants who live in town, work in town, are employed by the town, or have children enrolled in town public schools. Local preference guidelines give us a maximum of seventy percent of a project's units. In this case, that would be one. And they are awarded solely at the discretion of D H C D. D H C D usually grants a preference, but we can make no commitment in that respect. So the homes, again, we're proposing a traditional cape and a cape-style ranch with a porch, as these are beautiful designs. They're volunteer-friendly for our build process. They have floor plans that can be adapted to accommodate for disabilities if our selected families need those accommodations. At Tab B, there is a tabulation of, Exhibit B, rather, there's a tabulation of proposed buildings and architectural drawings, so you can see exactly what these things look like. Uh, they have full basements. Both homes will have full basements. We also include an eight-by-ten-foot shed. And generally, uh, it's a, it's a fairly simple design. We have, uh, low-impact landscaping. You can see the landscaping plan that we've submitted, which includes very simply, uh, foundation planting things and a couple of trees. Uh, all our homes meet or exceed D H C D Design and Construction Standards, including requirements for square footage, bathrooms, and appliances. Our homes comply with all applicable building codes. In terms of green building, Habitat homes typically meet or exceed LEED standards, although for cost-saving reasons, we do not seek certification. That's LEED, L-E-E-D. We use sustainable and renewable building materials whenever this is practical, and our homes consistently score advantageously in the Federal Home Loan Bank of Boston Affordable Housing Program Sections on Efficient Building and on Sustainable Buildings. Our homes have a high R-value for insulation. We use two-by-six construction, which allows for dense insulation in the walls. We have low HERS ratings. The houses are inherently efficient because they are built well and they are modest in size. We use Energy Star windows and appliances. We use highly efficient air-source heat pumps, which we have found to be an affordable heating system and an aid in indoor air quality. We use low or no V O C products and seek to use durable, renewable, and rapidly renewable materials wherever practical, including bamboo floors and other materials. Um, we do have a solar program. And we have placed solar panels on many of our builds. If possible, on this project, we would install solar panels. They would go on the rear of the buildings. They would not be visible from, uh, George Ryder Road South. They would also be, uh, black matte finish, very inconspicuous. And if we are allowed to do that, uh, a lot of our homes with solar are, are basically net zero or better. We have a program called Sweat Equity. Our selected purchaser family will partner with Habitat and invest two hundred and fifty hours for each adult member in working on their home. If they can't work on their home, they're permitted to work in our restores, or two restores, closest one being in Yarmouth. The work, working on the project promotes homeowners who are well-educated on building and maintenance, and it also fosters a sense of community. Habitat works closely with our buyers, not just through what is a very rigorous application process, but throughout the construction period. We give a lot of homebuyer education, including preparation for the closing of the project, budget counseling, and workshops in caring for their home and the landscaping. Sweat Equity and pre-purchase workshops have proven to be key elements in fostering successful home ownership. With quality, desirable, single-family homes priced affordably, Habitat creates homeownership opportunities for families at income levels that are not served by other affordability programs. We are an experienced developer. We're up to a hundred and forty-three houses since our founding in nineteen eighty-eight. We've got thirty-six more homes currently under construction or in development. And we would welcome the opportunity to develop these houses, these affordable homes in Chatham. Included in the application materials, just to go through it, again, at Exhibit A, you will find building tabulations and, uh, plans, um, architectural drawings and so on. At, uh, Tab B, there are, there's a tab, there's one incorrect statement in that the three-bedroom house has two full bathrooms, not, not just one and a half. Turning to Exhibit C, uh, you'll find the land disposition agreement between, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust and Habitat, as well as the deed that we would be using to convey or to receive the conveyance of the property. There's also our site eligibility letter dated August twelfth, twenty nineteen. Excuse me, I'm sorry. That's a five oh one C three letter. Habitat is a five oh one C three entity. And at Exhibit D, these are the list of waivers that we're requesting. They are fairly straightforward. Obviously, ten thousand square feet is below the size of lot that standard zoning would require, so we need a waiver from that. Our lot shape, because of the small size of our lot, we need relief from the lot shape requirement. There is a schedule of dimensional requirements for each lot that shows what we're asking for, including waivers from lot frontage, roadway setbacks, abutter setbacks, and minimum parking abutter setbacks. There is also a waiver being requested from the Town of Chatham Rules and Regulations of the Sewer Department, where basically the three-bedroom house requires a waiver for the third bedroom, as we understand that regulation. With respect to subdivision regulations, again, uh, we have the zoning problem with respect to the size of the lots. Uh, the utility easement that we're proposing for the front in between the two lots is ten by twenty feet, and we're requesting a waiver from the requirement that it be no less than twelve feet in width. And we're also requesting a waiver with respect to the monument requirements. Finally, with respect to driveways, the, uh, subdivision rules require that the driveways pitch to the roadways. And my understanding is this lot, these lots are so flat that it is hard to guarantee that will happen. So the waiver is requested for that. Uh, at Exhibit E, you see our pro forma. This is, uh, it is costly to build. These houses will cost us six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars if all goes well. And that's with the donation of the land. Uh, striking, isn't it? And to do that, we have to raise a lot of funds because this, obviously, the sales price does not cover much. Uh, Exhibit F has our, uh, development team. For those who are interested in the list of our recent developments going back to twenty thirteen. Um, at Exhibit G is our LIP application. That's the Local Initiative Program application that we submitted to D H C D. Exhibit H has the regulatory agreement, uh, the calculations for the affordable prices. And again, the deed rider appears again in that exhibit. Finally, in Exhibit I, we have information concerning, um, abutters with the abutters list, those who've been given notice, some correspondence with the abutters, and information concerning, uh, historic. And that is all we have before you. Um, other than, we'd be happy to answer any or all of your questions the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Um, is there any, this is Bob Hessler. Is there anybody in the audience or on, online or on the phone that would like to speak in favor of this proposal?
Mr. Chair, um, just want, this is Sarah. I just wanted to let the public know that all of the documents are available on the town's website. The full application has been uploaded to my town government. If anyone is interested in looking at all of the exhibits that have been provided.
Great. So I don't think anybody is speaking, so I will read the correspondence. This is a letter dated May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty from Dave Di Pasquale, who's Chief of the, um, Fire Department. He says, Sarah, to Sarah Clark, the Fire Department has no concerns with the forty B permit. This is a letter from the Cape Cod Commission. It is dated, um, June eleventh, twenty twenty to Z B A. And it says, Dear zoning board members, I'm writing to express the Cape Cod Commission's staff support for the George Ryder Road South Community Housing Project currently before the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals. Pursuant to Section thirteen J of the Cape Cod Commission Act, the Cape Cod Commission here, here-in-commission is considered a local board for purposes of Mass. General Law, um, Chapter forty B, I guess it's subsection twenty twenty-three. Accordingly, the commission provides through its staff and its capacity as a local board the following review board comment to the Z B A on the above-referenced property. Commission staff commends the Town of Chatham and the Affordable, Chatham Affordable Trust on its local planning process for the project to date. The project site is an approximately twenty thousand square-foot lot within a developed area. The project site is owned by the Chatham Affordable Housing Trust. The town underwent an R F P, which stands for Request for Proposal Process for the project, reflecting local concerns and priorities, and it awarded the project to Habitat's Humanity of Cape Cod. The project has undergone, bear with me here, uh, extensive local discussion and input, and is a local initiative program project. The project will also meet or exceed L-E-E-D standards, although it will not be L-E-E-D certified. Uh, there continues to be an acute need for affordable housing in all towns on Cape Cod. Approximately five percent of Chatham's existing housing stock is considered affordable. The Cape Cod Commission Act and Cape Cod Regional Policy Plan look to preserve the society diversity, the social diversity of the region by promoting the development of affordable housing for low and moderate-income people. The application pro, process to subdivide the lot into two approximately one, ten thousand square-foot lots and construct one single-family home on each of the two lots. One home is proposed to be a two-bedroom ranch, and the second is a three-bedroom cape. The homes will be sold to families earning not more than sixty-five percent of the area median income for Barnstable County. One of the homes may be made available to a local preference owner. Both homes will be deed restricted in perpetuity. According to the application, the project is proposed to be connected to public sewer and water, and the site does not contain wetlands or other sensitive natural resources. The project does not present significant regional impacts, impacts, and the project will help address the need for affordable housing in the region, consisting with the housing goals of the Cape Cod Commission Act and the twenty eighteen Cape Cod Regional Policy Plan. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this project. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact Chloe Schaefer, Chief Planner, at chloeschaefer@capecodcommission.org or at area code five oh eight seven four four one two one nine. And it is signed by Kristy, the Attorney Executive Director. This is a memo from, um, let's see, it's from the Board of Health. It's dated the seventeenth of June. It is said, I've reviewed the application for this project. The proposed dwellings will be connected to town sewer, one two-bedroom dwelling and one three-bedroom dwelling. The sites as proposed do not meet the Local Board of Health Nitrogen Loading Regulation. However, this requirement is waived for a forty B application on town sewer. Sewer flow must be approved by the Sewer Department. I have no further concerns about this project. And then the final letter, uh, was referenced by Warren. It's from Catherine Halpern, the Chair of the Planning Board, dated June sixteenth. The Planning Board at their June eighth, twenty twenty, meeting reviewed the Z B A's requests for comment on the above-referenced application to build two new, single-family deed-restricted affordable homes at eleven George Ryder Road South, which is proposed to be accomplished through the subdivision of the property into two parcels. After review of this request, the Board voted to send a positive recommendation, recommendation to the Z B A. Members voting in favor of this request were Catherine Halpern, Chairman, Art Sprutch, Robert Wirtshafter, Warren Chain, and Bob Dubus. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact us, and that's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anybody in the audience or online or on the phone that has a, wishes to speak against this proposal or has a specific question? Say that. Questions from the board?
Nope, nope. Hang on. Bob, just wait one second. We do have someone that would like to speak?
Uh, would you please identify yourself and give us the last four digits of your telephone number?
Uh, this is Myron calling. I'm thirty-five George Ryder South. My last digits are four-two-seven-zero. And I have my other neighbor here, Chuck, with me. He's also on George Ryder. We're using the same computer, basically. We're gonna be neighbors to the new property. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So my concern is the driveway of Lot A. It's gonna be directly next to my bedrooms, and I have a concern about emissions and the noise. If there's any way the planned lot would consider putting the driveway on the other side or have a shared driveway, because the way it's proposed right now is gonna be right next to my bedroom on thirty-five George Ryder South. The other concern is the lot hasn't been mowed or cleaned for the last ten years that I've been here. It's been like a jungle, and snakes have been growing. There's a safety hazard issue that has never been addressed as to cleaning the lot. So those are my main concerns.
Warren, would you like to address those?
Um, well, um, Habitat is not the owner of the property, so with respect to clearing the lot, um, you'd have to address that to the trust. Uh, as for the driveway layout, um, I'm not, when, when the speaker says it's right next to his bedroom window?
Yes.
What the actual distance is?
It's fifteen feet. It's very close.
Well, um, yeah, I'm not the, not the designer. Maybe, uh, um, uh, you wanna, wanna take this one? Bob Reedy?
Can the designer be involved and give us an answer?
Well, it's, we're proposing this design. This is Warren Brody again. We are proposing this particular design.
I know that.
Shared driveway, the way, the, the orientation of the telephone, of the, uh, electrical easement, I don't think it would work with moving the driveway to the other side or using a shared driveway.
Or both driveways could be on the left side of the house, the same way like Lot B is proposed, a duplicate of that same driveway. B is proposed, a duplicate of that same driveway. Two separate driveways, but at least it would be away from my bedroom, on the other side of the house, I mean.
I hear you, sir.
Yeah.
Again, Warren Brody, I'm not the designer. This is the design that we're proposing.
This is Bob Reedy, J.M. O'Reilly Associates. I am the site engineer for the project. Sorry, I just had to get myself unmuted there, but I think everybody can hear me now.
We can.
I'm looking at the town website, GIS, and from what I can tell, it does appear as if the edge of the building is, I would say, approximately 40 to 50 feet from the lot line, and our driveway is, you know, only about two feet off of the lot line. So it is very close to the lot line there, but it does look like it will be significantly more than 15 feet. I can't say that we have located the exact building corners in terms of getting the exact distance. I could give a little bit better estimate, you know, once I had a little bit of a time to measure that out, but based on just measuring on the screen, it looks like it'd be about a 50-foot setback from the driveway to the edge of the building, as shown on Chatham GIS mapping. I don't know if that contributes to the abutters concern at all, but it will be a little bit more spaced than 15 feet.
Well, I think the abut, this is Bob Hessler speaking. I think that the abutters asking is, can you move the driveway to the other side of the house?
Correct. That's the question. Can you move it to the other side of the house?
And if not, why not?
Right.
Uh, well, I, it's certainly something that could be considered. A lot of what we were looking at with the spacing of the driveways was in consideration of, one, how we're going to bring in electricity, which, you know, we do have that running through the center of the lot right there. In terms of working around the driveway to the opposite side, I mean, obviously what we're looking at is a pretty tight design here, so, you know, the result of moving the driveway to that side would be bringing the dwelling closer to the property line. So I guess the question of the trade-off would be is if there's a preference of having the two-bedroom ranch closer to the southern property line in order to allow that driveway space to be put on the other side of the property. You know, obviously with the lot being exactly 20,000 square feet and us needing to have 10,000 square feet per lot in order to have two dwellings on this, on this piece of land, it's important for us to have the two lots divided equally in size. And so, you know, in terms of the shape of the lot, we are somewhat tied into the lot as is. And in terms of looking at driveway space and shared driveway space, the additional space that would be required for four cars to maneuver within the driveway would essentially remove any benefits you'd get from sharing the driveway, and in fact, actually probably make it so it would be a bit of a larger driveway than two separate ones. So our experience typically with these is to have separate driveways in addition to maintenance and separate, you know, property concerns. You know, a shared driveway obviously brings in a lot of concerns in a scenario where these are two separate properties that otherwise are not sharing anything besides an electrical easement. So really what we would be looking at if asked to move the driveway would probably be to switch the two sides, and the concern with that just would be that we'd be moving the dwelling itself closer to the house. If that is the abutters preference, then I think that's certainly something that we could discuss. I don't know if they have any comment on that?
Yeah, that would be by preference. I mean, for two reasons. If the property dwelling can be moved, if possible, by, you know, back a little bit, that would allow you to gain some land. Also, you know, the driveway distance would get wider, and also, I wouldn't have to deal with the emissions if cars are idling in the driveway, being so close to the bedrooms, and the noise as well. So moving the dwelling maybe, I'm just guessing, I'm not an engineer, by 10 feet or so, the driveway can be relocated on the opposite side of the lot, like the same design as Lot B, basically. I know what you're saying. You're tight with the property design and everything, but there's land behind the dwelling, and there's, the dwelling could be moved a little bit to the right side of the land that would allow you to have more, a wider driveway on the left side.
Okay, so if there's no one else in the audience that wishes to ask a question, let's go to questions from the board, and we can certainly discuss this driveway issue among ourselves. Is that satisfactory to everyone?
Yes. Mr. Hessler, I just wanted to make one correction. The waiver requested is not for the lot size, because the lot sizes do comply with the GB3 district. However, it is for the lot frontage, and I just wanted to have that on record for the minutes of the meeting.
Thank you. So, questions from the board. Mr. Nixon?
At this time, I do not have any questions. Thank you.
And that was Dave Nixon speaking. Mr. Semple, please identify yourselves and then ask any questions.
Yes, this is Paul Semple. I do not have any questions at this time.
Yes, Bob, sorry. I'm wondering, Sarah, can you tell me, I'm thinking that GB3, there are requirements and restrictions with respect to driveway placement, but that they, those kinds of things are not customarily, those things are not, don't apply in the residential zones. In other words, residential zones are really not restrictions on driveway placements, are there?
Correct. In a residential zone, there is footnote 11 under Appendix 2 of our Protective Bylaw, which is for all non-residential uses or uses accessory to. Those are, that's a 10-foot setback. In a GB3 zone, however, there is a 15-foot setback for a driveway, whether it's a residential or commercial driveway. There is no allowance for that.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't have any other questions at this time, Bob. Thanks.
Happy.
Happy Vansicle here. I don't have any questions at this time.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yep, Dennis Sullivan. I just have one question to Attorney Brody. What goes into the determination to build one three-bedroom and one two-bedroom rather than, for example, two, three-bedrooms? Just, there must be some determination that was made.
Um, I can't tell you what happened or how that determination was made. I will tell you that we try to mix the number of bedrooms that we have in our developments to meet the needs of the community.
Okay.
Including one-bedrooms. Occasionally, we build one-bedroom houses as well.
And can you give us any indication as to what happens during a foreclosure?
A foreclosure?
Have you had any experience with that?
Very rarely. We've had, I think, maybe one or two that we've started. I don't know that we've ever actually concluded one.
Okay.
There are revisions in the deed rider that address that.
Yeah, I saw that.
And I would refer you to those, and including the resale aspects are dealt with in the deed rider, where the municipality basically has a right of first refusal if there's no eligible buyer that's found.
Yeah, the only reason I asked is-
I don't know about foreclosure.
The only reason I asked is because I was involved with one off Cape, and the end result was that the, the unit, the house in question there then was put on the, on the standard market. It became, it was brought out of low income. I was wondering if you had any experience in that effect with Habitat?
Uh, yes.
I guess it's never happened?
Uh, no, it can't happen. The deed rider has been revised so that that cannot happen.
Oh, okay.
The deed rider will survive a foreclosure.
Okay. Okay, that's, I think at one time it did not, but apparently it does now. Okay, thank you.
You're correct. At one time, it did not, but it does now.
Mr. Upson?
Yes, Mr. Hessler. I have a couple of questions for Mr. O'Reilly, the engineer.
Sure, it's Bob Reedy.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought Bob, I thought Bob was the construction and Mr. O'Reilly was the engineer, but it doesn't matter.
No, you're not, you're close. It's Bob Reedy with J.M. O'Reilly Associates and Bob Riley, the project engineer, so your confusion is understandable.
I'll ask the question, and you guys can field who answers it. I'm a little concerned about the two pieces of information. The abut feels that the driveway is 15 feet. The surveyor, I guess, looking at the town GIS, thinks that it's 50 feet. So the question to the surveyor or the engineer, in your experience, would this be the first time that you've seen GIS not agree with a physical field measurement?
Well, there can't really be a physical field measurement yet because the driveway's not there yet, so I don't know. I mean, the measurement would be if the abut had a chance to look at the property line stakes that have been put out for the ZBA meeting. Those show where the property corners are at the front and back, and, you know, so if you can see where the property line is from there and then walk the distance to your property, that would give you a rough idea. I have been looking at the GIS more since I talked. I've refined my estimate to about 40 feet from the property line to the edge of the building, provided that the building that's shown on the GIS hasn't had any additions to it along that side since the GIS was put in. So that would be my rough estimate. But in terms of measuring in the field, you would have to know where the property line is in order to know how far away the proposed driveway will be.
I'd like to reword my question.
Okay.
The question is not on this specific lot or on this project, but in your professional experience over the years, when you've used GIS or referred to GIS, has it ever been misleading compared to the actual measurements?
The actual measurement is always the ideal way to go, and if we want to know exactly how far away the building is from our property line, the only way we would be able to sign off on that as surveyors would be to locate the building corners themselves. So we haven't done that, and so the 40 feet is nothing more than just an estimate from looking at the GIS, certainly not as accurate as locating it, but that's certainly something that, you know, could be done if necessary. I think for the time being, the question would just be, you know, what would be a satisfactory approach for Habitat and for the abut, and then if a question of distance came in, then we could certainly get to a more accurate distance of what we have for a setback by getting our field crew out there.
I still think we're miscommunicating. I don't, not specific to this project, but in your experience over several years of surveying in the field, is it, this would be the first time that GIS is misleading to a physical measurement?
Um, I'm not sure, I guess I'm just not understanding in the sense that I'm not sure GIS is providing anything misleading here. And again, I generally feel that always an actual measurement is always better than using GIS because it's always more accurate, regardless of what scenario we're looking at. I think what we're describing in this scenario, again, I know you're looking for a generalization. In general, you always do want to use a measurement, and in this scenario, yes, the measurement would be good, but there is no measurement at this point because there's no driveway to measure from. It can only be done on AutoCAD or by using GIS.
All right. Well, we'll go to the second question. If it was found that it was necessary to go to a common drive, which would go in the middle, I think we heard that the electrical service, which runs down the middle property line, would be a problem. Are you saying that it can't be solved, or it would just create, it would require some creative thinking?
In terms of, if we were to do a shared driveway in the middle, then it would just be a situation where we would have to change the electrical easement situation to two separate electrical easements. Well, there probably would no longer be an easement. Instead, we would have to do two separate electrical connections that would be on every, each lot, simply because the center lot line would be taken up by the parking area. So it's not so much an issue that it couldn't be done because of that. That would just be another thing that would need to be revised as a result of moving the driveways to the middle.
Thank you. Those are my two questions.
This is Bob Hessler. I have two questions. Have you given, if you could bring that last slide up that you had on before this one, that showed, I guess it was the-
Do you want the GIS slide?
Yes, the GIS. Looking at this GIS, I assume that the yellow outline is the lot that we're talking about, and is the subject property from the abut the one immediately to the left? So that's one question.
That would be correct.
Okay. My second question is, have you given any thought to putting garages on these properties? Is it possible to do it? And if it's not, would a waiver work to give you garage, garages?
I think from a space perspective, we simply don't have enough space to add garages in without, you know, having to change the shape of our lots in some sort of a way where, you know, they're, they simply wouldn't be able to fit on the lot as presently constructed without us just running out of space in between the property lines.
Is there any reason why you're putting the shed on the street as opposed to putting them in the back?
Good question. The shed goes, that shouldn't be in the back.
Maybe the shed is in the back, but-
Yeah, both sheds are, behind the lot.
All right, I misread the, that's all the questions I have. If there are any other questions, Mr. Semple?
I will move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Yes. I have one more question to the board, please. I'm the neighbor on 35 George Ryder South, Myron.
Sure, go ahead.
So, is there any possibility to put a fence between my property and the new construction?
Oh, it's up to him.
Is that something that would be considered or that would be looked into?
Well, I think you could put a fence up. I think it's also a question worthy of asking the Habitat for Humanity, just to see how they feel about it, but you could certainly put a fence up. Of course, you'd have to incur the expense, but Warren, do you want to weigh in on that question?
Um, yeah, it's an area where I don't have any authority, but it would certainly be something we would consider, or possibly sharing the expense of a fence if that was all the problem.
Okay.
And the last question is, has it ever been looked into, instead of doing two separate constructions, doing like a townhouse and two families moving in, it would be more kind of appealing to the eye? It doesn't look like, you know, like two houses into a narrow driveway. Has it ever been considered, doing like a townhouse and two families sharing like two houses in one construction?
Warren Brody speaking. I don't know that that was ever considered here. We have built townhouses. We have built duplexes. I don't know that it was ever considered for this particular area.
Would it work? Bob Hessler here.
Uh, it's a really good question. We have found that some communities on the Cape don't want to see them. Others are more open-minded. Chatham obviously has a mix of housing, including townhouses. It's possible that something like that could work. It does create problems for us in terms of shared maintenance considerations. It requires having another reserve for the replacement of roofs and add some other complexities.
May have firewalls and that kind of thing.
Yeah, all that.
All right, was just a thought. So if there are no further questions?
Mr. Hessler, Mr. Como, who is also an abutter, has his hand up, so I'm not sure if he wanted to speak.
Mr. Como, could you identify yourself and give us the last four digits of your phone number?
Yeah, Chuck Como, 49, George Ryder Road. The last four on my number is 8219. So I just had a question about the, in terms of that driveway and the easement, it looks like there's a utility pole being proposed for that location, and then that they should be undergrounding from the utility pole to the housing. If they slide the house back, I see no issue with putting paving over the easement because you're allowed to pave over it, but you just can't put a permanent structure on one. So I should think that that would be an easy solution. So, I should think that that would be an easy solution to the neighbor's situation. I mean, given the fact that the lot was designed and subdivided with the intent that there was going to be a single-family home there, I don't think that that would be a bad consideration, seeing as there were two houses.
Getting a lot of, a lot of blowback on the, on the volume. Is anybody doing things they shouldn't be?
Okay.
That's better.
Can you hear me now? Okay.
That's fine.
So, I'm thinking that the driveway thing is probably a good concession based on the fact that the lot was designed for a single-family home to go there when it was originally subdivided. And now that there's two homes and two driveways and two of everything there, it would probably be good if that could get shifted down and it would, you know, get slide the house back and that's a minor adjustment on paper prior to anything being built. So, I think that would be great if the board could consider that in the deliberations and take that into account. I think it would, it would be helpful with how the whole layout looks at the end of the day when the houses are constructed. Other than that, how does this work too? Just, I was curious. You were saying that the sale prices were going to be in the 158 range. How does that affect the area surrounding everybody with property values? Does that have any impact on anything or how is that taken into consideration when comps are done and surrounding taxes are assessed on surrounding houses? Does, I'm not sure how that works. Can anybody answer that question for me?
Yeah, Warren Brody speaking. Well, you know, you're basically looking at two completely different markets. Affordable housing is a market all by itself and it's a very, very limited market. These houses don't sell very often and when they do, the prices again are limited to, basically to the amount by which inflation has occurred since the last purchase and that's it. In terms of affecting the property values around it, I, it's not an issue that we've worried about. I don't see why one would. The taxes are based upon the dictated sale prices, so the taxes remain low, but this is what subsidized housing is.
Okay. Yeah, no, I was just asking how it affects things in general in the area, that's all.
Bob Reed, Jim O'Reilly Associates. I just wanted to just address the butter's first comment about the shared driveway. Just speaking from Habitat's individual experiences on, in terms of driveway and how that stuff works with separate lots, there have been issues in the past and maybe Bob Riley can speak a little bit more than I can, just in terms of two separate lots with separate ownership that then are, you know, required to share driveway space in terms of, you know, cars blocking each other, in terms of required repairs, in terms of pay, or I should say, plowing. I might be missing a few things that maybe Bob can add to, but I know that there have been several headaches and issues that have arisen due to shared driveways that have led us to typically try to avoid them and use single driveways when possible.
Thank you. So, we have a motion on the table from Mr. Semple to close the hearing. Do we have a second from Mr. Keith?
Mr. Hessler, prior to closing or continuing this hearing, I would ask if any board members have comments about the proposal that they would like to share with the applicant, since they most likely will be continuing, this would be the time to do so.
So, we can't really close it if it's a continuation, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
All right. So, then we need comments from the board until we get the request to continue. Mr. Nixon.
Yes, Dave Nixon here. Number one, the idea of building a townhouse or something like that, I don't think we would want to consider. It sounds to me like Habitat has spent a long time figuring out what kind of homes would make sense in this particular area and that's what they have presented to us. The idea of switching that, those gears and redesigning it, to me, is just wasting time. Personally, I feel you're much better off with separate ownership as opposed to, as Warren pointed out, the shared cost sometimes doesn't work. It really doesn't. So, I think we should put that aside and say that the only thing I would like to see at our next meeting is their possible solution to the neighbor's concern about the driveway running by his bedroom window. And if we could reduce it to that, I think would make it a lot easier for Habitat and it would make it a lot easier for the neighbor and go from there. So, those would be my initial comments on what I've been hearing and I would hope that we would continue this, give them an opportunity to work on that specific, just that specific, the driveway issue. And when they come back, then we can perhaps settle the hash here. So, that would be the end of my comments. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Semple.
Yes, this is Paul Semple. I agree with Mr. Nixon's comments. I'm a little unclear why, why the driveway for Lot A could not either be on the other side of the building with the building moved over a bit or whether it couldn't in some way run past the building into the back of Lot A such that the storage activity, if any, on the driveway would not be next to the home at 35 George Ryder Road South. Maybe if it would not be too expensive, it would make sense at the next hearing to have a depiction of where the house is at 35 George Ryder Road South, vis a vis the lot line as shown on Lot A, so that we could see where, how things are actually placed there. But I guess what I'm saying is overall, I think the plans are good plans and there are plans that we can certainly support, but I would like to try to address this concern of the neighbor if it's possible to do so in a reasonable manner. That would be my thought.
Yes, David Beach. I am in agreement with Dave Nixon's and Paul's comments. I, I would, I'd like to see that, I mean, I would like to see a solution with the neighbor that, if it was possible to come up, come to a solution with this present layout, I think it would be easier for everyone. I'm just not, it's, since we don't have the neighbor's building, we don't know exactly where it's placed. I mean, looking at the GIS map, it's, there's not a lot, the GIS map doesn't, shows that neighbor's house being not much different in its setback from the road than from the property line. And if, to the extent that that's true, I'm not sure that I go along with the concerns about, about parking and emissions and from cars and things like that. So, I think it would be better to perhaps have some more information with how far his house is away from the proposed driveway in order to help us come to a decision and, or, and/or if they were able to work together, the neighbors and Habitat via fencing or, you know, some sort of vegetated buffer or something. I would prefer to see that. I hate to see them have to go back to the drawing board. I don't know what, if they do go through all that, whether they're going to need to go through all the hearings they went through before they came to us again or not. So, that's, those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan.
Yep, Dennis Sullivan here. I agree with what's been said prior to this. I think one of the possibilities here would be simply to shorten the driveway. It looks like it's close to 40, maybe 50 feet long. And if we can have a, some ideas for where the southern house is located, maybe if we just shorten the driveway rather than reposition it would be satisfactory. But I guess it all depends where that southern house lies in relation to the proposed new house. So, that's the only comment I have. Thank you.
Happy.
Happy Van Sickle here. I, first of all, it sounds to me like there needs to be a survey so that we would know definitively where the driveway would be and propose to the neighbor. But also too, I think the idea of a shared driveway is probably the worst idea I've ever heard because again, you have cars, parking, people coming and going, snow shoveling, all those things that require ensuring a driveway is, to me, is just, it could possibly be a disaster. So, I, I don't know. Is a survey something that is too costly or couldn't be done to give us some idea for our next gathering, exactly what all the measurements are?
Ms. Van Sickle, this is Sarah. I will be in the office tomorrow and according to our assessor's records, the house at 35 George Ryder Road South was built in 2005. Therefore, we should have a survey of that property in our building files, which I can scan and email to both the applicant and the board members.
Thank you.
I think that would, thank you, Sarah. I think that would be valuable because now we're just sort of guessing and with not enough information to determine the actual closeness to the neighbors. So, other than that, that would be my only suggestion. Thank you.
Mr. Upson. Buck?
I'm here, Buck. Thank you. My concerns were the actual distance, but I think between Sarah saying they have blueprints for 35 and the conversations from Happy, it would be nice to know the facts instead of, we'll just say, assumed distances. And I do think that a fence, you know, a six-foot-high fence would certainly help on the impact of reducing sound and any emissions so that if in fact there is a very small separation, a fence might be a partial solution to the problem.
I just, this is Happy again. I just would like to jump in on that, Buck. I would hope that maybe before we go to the fence situation, we would talk about a natural barrier, you know, lead and cypress or something like that, which would allow more air coming through and foster division.
So, I'm not sure if everyone was able to hear Happy, but she said she would prefer, before we do a six-foot fence, to consider a natural vegetated buffer.
This is Buck. Sometimes natural vegetated buffers, if they're not watered, don't last very long and they are expensive to maintain possibly.
I'm not sure if we, I'm not sure if we lost Mr. Hessler or not. But I did get your comment Buck about the need for watering of a vegetated buffer.
Sarah.
Yes. I'm here, Buck.
Oh, yeah, okay. One of my phones died, so now Happy and I are sharing a phone. So, what I was going to say was, I think the message for Habitat for Humanity for the next presentation in July is think about what you can do about the driveway. Think about doing something about a fence or a vegetative screen. I think, and at least in my opinion, is that the shared driveway is not a good idea, but kind of think about those two or three things when you come back to us in July and see if you've got a solution or an answer or some suggestions that the board can then consider when we go into deliberations and vote. Overall, I think it's a fabulous project and I fully support it, but I think we need to address the driveway issue and we'll leave that to you until the next hearing.
Mr. Hessler, this is Buck speaking.
Yes.
The, one of the abutters, Mr. Como of 49 George Ryder South, was asking a question about the assessed value of his house. I think he was concerned whether, does it go up or down or does it have impact on his financial pocket? And I don't know if it's even in our scope of vision, but wouldn't it be appropriate to, for us to maybe inquire of the Chatham Tax Office, Tax Assessor, of how does low-income housing impact the homes 100, 200, 300 feet from this project, this project? Or that doesn't matter?
Yeah, Buck, this is Dave Nixon. I don't think it matters and that's an issue that, nothing we could ever vote on or factor into our deliberations. It just, it isn't. And I feel actually the same way about the fence. That's something to, that Habitat and the neighbors can work on, it isn't for us to, I don't think. End of statement.
Bob Reed, Jim O'Reilly Associates. I think, I can't necessarily speak for Habitat without having a chance to convene with all of us in the same room or at least on the same phone call, but I certainly think we're willing to work with the neighbors in terms of finding a solution that works for both of us. And I think a wise approach would be for us to convene with them between now and the next meeting and come up with an approach that will work for both of us and get back to you at that point.
This is Paul Semple. I agree with Mr. Nixon. I do not think that the effect on values in the neighborhood is within our purview in dealing with this kind of an application.
So, Mr. Hessler, I did want to let you know, this is Sarah. We will have additional correspondence at our next meeting from the ETC and the Affordable Housing Committee. I know they've been renamed, but I can't think of their name at the moment. So, we will have additional correspondence and as I stated previously, I will look into the record for 35 George Ryder Road South and email the survey we have on file to the applicant and the board members. So, that way we have that all for information and if there is any other items that the board would like to see prior to our next hearing, it would be obviously beneficial for the applicant to know that now.
This is, this is Paul Semple. I don't see any other information that's necessary other than what we've discussed today.
David Beach, I agree. Buck, this is Dennis Sullivan. I just, is it typical that Habitat comes in and just clear cuts the entire lot? Because it's a heavily vegetated lot, but I didn't see there are a lot of trees there, but do they just come in and clear cut everything?
Bob Reed, Jim O'Reilly. Typically, they would clear the developed area, really only as much as is necessary and based on how we're showing the plan, roughly the back 30% to 40% of the lot would be able to stay undisturbed, which is the intent is, as you can see with the, there is a building and then an edge of pavement right close to the back of the property there. So, that back slope portion would certainly be staying undisturbed as it currently is.
Oh, well, that's good. Good.
Are there any other questions from the audience? Um, seeing none, we would need a request from the applicant to be able to continue the hearing.
Excuse us, Warren Brody. Need a request from the applicant to continue the hearing?
Yes, please. So we need to continue it to a date specific, um, which I believe we've discussed as July 23rd. Um, Mr. Hessler, we will have five applications on that hearing, including this one. So depending on when you would like to start, we could do a 4:00 or a 3:00, um, but we do need to continue to a date and time specific.
Okay, then we would request that we continue it to July 23rd at 3:00.
This is Paul Semple. I'll move to grant the request as made to July 23, 2020.
I have a second.
David Veach, second?
All those in favor?
Nixon votes yes.
And Mr. Nixon?
Nixon votes yes.
Mr. Semple?
Semple votes yes.
Mr. Veach?
Veach votes yes.
Happy Van Sickle?
Van Sickle votes yes.
And, um, that's it. And I vote yes. Bob Hessler, the chair. So we will see you on the 23rd of July, Warren.
It'd be nice if we could.
But maybe we will see you by then.
Thank you all, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, for your time and attention. I appreciate it.
Um, this is Chairman.
Thank you.
Uh, before we adjourn, uh, because I don't think there's anything else on the, uh, calendar, um, I just want to say this may be my last meeting, um, with the ZBA. I'm not sure yet, and I won't know until the selectmen vote, and I don't know when the selectmen are going to vote.
They're going to vote on July 7th.
Um, okay, July 7th, which means that I'm, well, I still won't be here. Um, I mean, I still, it still may be my last meeting. But what I would like to say, um, even, even though I don't know when I'm, if I'm going to be back on the board or not, is that I've been on it for 10 years, and I've been on, uh, as chairman or vice chairman for six. And during my tenure, it's been a great and enjoyable and learning experience. And I would like to acknowledge our current board members, Mr. Nixon, Mr. Veach, Mr. Semple, Mrs. Van Sickle, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Thompson, and Mr. Upson. And none of us could function in our ZBA positions with the out, without the support of Sarah Clark especially, as well as Chantel Kilkenny, Katie Donovan, and Jay Briggs. All of you on the, um, town staff makes ZBA, makes ZBA the envy of other appointed Chatham boards and a role model for how volunteers should function. I'd also like to mention my thanks to Don Freeman, who served on ZBA for many years, as well as to remember those board members with whom I served and who are no longer with us. They being Joe Craig, Peter Acton, and Ed Fooey. All of them helped to set the standards by which our ZBA board is recognized. By my count, I've listened to about a thousand ZBA petitions, and incredibly, I think we've only lost one or two lawsuits related to those petitions. We've resolved all of our differences with Chatham Barzine. We've endured all the new FEMA regulations, auxiliary dwelling units, several 40B applications, including today's 81L subdivision controversies, and the ever-changing demands from property owners. We did it all together, and although I hope we'll continue to work together, I will miss you if I'm, if I'm not reappointed. Thanks. So with that, Sarah, I think we need a motion to adjourn.
We will need a motion to adjourn, uh, specifying the time that we are adjourning.
It is 4:40. And Mr. Nixon? Well, we need a motion to adjourn, so if I need a motion, Mr. Semple?
Uh, this is Paul Semple. I'll move to adjourn the meeting, uh, as of the effective time, which is, uh, 4:23 PM.
Mr. Veach?
David Veach, seconds?
All those in favor, Mr. Nixon?
Nixon votes yes.
Mr. Semple?
Semple votes yes.
Mr. Veach?
Veach votes yes.
Van Sickle votes yes.
Um, Mr. Sullivan? He left.
Yeah, he wouldn't vote anyway, Buck.
Um, all right, so, and I vote yes. So it passes unanimously. We do not have, before we adjourn, we do not have minutes left at the next hearing. So thank you, one and all, for sitting in on this. Um, 40Bs are always a learning experience, and, um, Sarah, I think that's it.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.